Thank you, and the clerk will take the roll.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
And we're all here this morning.
Chair, could I get you closer to the mic?
Sure. I'll get the mic closer to me. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, here we go. Item number four is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 in purchase card claims paid for the periods ending December 27th, 2024, and January 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number five is the approval of minutes for the following meetings. We have January 7th, 2025, our statutory and organizational county board meeting. We'll take that one first. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion or comments or changes? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. The second one is January 7th, 2025, our regular county board meeting. Any changes? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Moving down to chair's remarks. First of all, I want to, we have one item this morning under chair's remarks today. We're actually going to have two items, but we're going to start with this one. And that's to recognize the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office for its efforts to have Medical Legal Death Investigators Professionals Week recognized by the state of Minnesota. I'm going to ask Commissioner Reiner, our lead commissioner on the Medical Examiner's Office under our government operations focus, to tell us more, introduce our guests from the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Gamache. Medical Legal Death Investigators Professionals Week is January 19th through the 25th. Prior to this year, it was simply a time where medical legal death investigators were recognized for the work they did in determining cause of death, oftentimes under challenging circumstances. Due to the efforts of our Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, which is headquartered in the city of Ramsey and serves our community and also other affiliated counties, these medical examiners, coroners, and death investigators were honored at the state level for the first time via official proclamation from the governor's office. Part of the proclamation reads, "The work of these professionals contributes to prevent future death, identifying public health threats, and holding accountable those responsible for wrongful death. The work they do is truly essential to our legal system, and we all owe them a debt of gratitude." Now, I'm going to ask Shane Sheets, Director of the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, to speak more about this effort to get professionals at the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office and other similar offices in Minnesota recognized at the state level. Also joining Mr. Sheets from the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office are Angie Chalmers, Supervisor, Administrative Services, Jamie Ryerson, Morgue Operations Supervisor, Camille Bellina, Supervisor of Investigations, Michael Falk, Supervisor of Investigations, Brigitte Burchet, Administrative Assistant, Stephanie Regg, Forensic Technician, Lisa Hamelgrun, Forensic Technician, Paige Luchens, Office Forensic Investigator, Amanda Bachman, Office Forensic Investigator, Nikki Gray, Field Investigator, Kat Kamen, Field Investigator, and Stephanie Glanz, Field Investigator. And also with us today is Dr. A. Quinn Piper, Chief Medical Examiner. For all those who I've named, could you please stand up and let's take a look at you? Thank you very much for being here today, and congratulations. Truly an honor to be recognized by the governor that way. Now, I'd like to pass the floor over to the one and only Shane Sheets.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair and of course county commissioners, thank you for the opportunity for us to come out here and show our staff the debt of gratitude. I think they really deserve it. It's amazing to be recognized at the state level via proclamation. I just want to note that this year too, we were the first in Minnesota, organization in Minnesota, to get this proclamation, and to me, that's significant. Also with the U.S. Senate in January, they passed Resolution 532, which also recognizes the work of medical legal death investigation professionals. So it's amazing to see us recognized on a national, state level, and as always, we appreciate your recognition you give us every day as part of the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. But I think you said it very well, Commissioner Reiner, but this week really allows us to remember the importance of supporting their work that they do every day. I mean, they're acting as the voice for the deceased. They're investigating suspicious cases, accidental cases, homicides, or you just don't know what happened. I mean, they're dealing with the worst of the worst to get answers for families, and it includes forensic technicians, forensic pathologists, our administrative assistants, medical transcriptionists, death investigators, and more. It is all part of the coroner medical examiner system. And so we're trying to arrange a date to head over to the Capitol Building to accept the proclamation. We're just waiting on a few responses, so we'll make sure to get photos for you after that as well. But thank you so much, and again, thank you to the staff. This was their week last week, and I hope they realize how much we do appreciate them at the county board level and beyond now, so.
Thank you very much, Shane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, and I want to thank everyone for being here, including the little one. She's doing great. She's not, she should be crying. It would really add a lot to the meeting, but I just, we just, we really do appreciate you guys, and now that we know about this, we're going to make sure that every year we do a resolution on this, up at the board to honor this week and bring attention to it, so. Anybody have any comments or discussions? Okay. Again, thank you so much for being here, and thank you so much for the important work that you do every day. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Now, for those of you at home, you probably noticed we're not sitting in the chambers at Anoka County. We are in the beautiful city of Coon Rapids this morning. I want to thank the city council, Mayor Cook and Matt Stemmittle, their city administrator, for allowing us to use this beautiful facility this morning. Commissioner Schulte has got his old label from, as a city council member, was presented to him.
Oh, look at that.
And he appreciates it, but Matt, I'd like to give you an opportunity just to come up and say a few words. I said 30 minutes, but you know, whatever you want to do.
I think I can do 30 seconds. Chair Gamache and members of the board, it's a pleasure to host you this morning, and we got the call a few months ago about whether or not you could use our chambers. It said, sure, nothing really happens here on Tuesday morning, so it's a lot of fun for us to see the buzz around City Hall this morning, and we appreciate you thinking of us, so. Beyond that, I just wanted to thank and recognize some of the great partnerships the city's had with the county over the recent years, in particular, I think about some transportation projects, you know. Commissioner Schulte was presenting to a Rotary Club yesterday about Highway 10 and what a great project that will be this summer to add a third lane from Robinson Drive here out to Round Lake and alleviate some of that congestion and get people north and south. I think that'll be a pretty major improvement, and your staff's been great working with our city engineer on the Highway 610 Full Access Interchange Project, where it's about a little less than a $40 million project. We actually have about 50% of the funding for that project right now through some federal and state programs, and we're looking forward to asking the state legislature for assistance, some assistance for that this legislative session, to the extent that you're connecting with any of them. Don't forget about us, you know, we got a $10 million request in for some trunk highway funds to help us complete that project. And beyond that, just a number of things, of course, from a maintenance standpoint, parks planning, trail planning, the list goes on and on, so we really do appreciate the effort that you give to Coon Rapids, and I know a lot of folks that have standing in the county, and I'm always happy to reach out to them, and great working relationship with Mr. Dickinson, and so he made a great hire there, and we appreciate that. So that's it for now, unless you have any questions of me.
Thank you, Matt. Any comments or questions for Matt? Seeing none, we appreciate it. Again, thanks to the council and the mayor for this. We don't have any council members here either, I don't believe.
We do not, but yes.
They're busy guys.
They send their regards, and yeah, we welcome you to the city.
Yeah, thank you much. We appreciate giving us this opportunity to be here and filling in while our room is getting fixed up. We're going to move now to the Committee of Hole Recommendations. This is our first time having a full committee of the hole before us, and we're going to do this following what I have before me. So I'm going to read through the items that we're going to do under Government Ops. As we determine how we want this to flow and how we want this to work, we'll make some changes along the way. Just for this morning, we're going to do it this way, and then as we have discussions at workshops and different functions, we can decide where we want to make some changes. The other three categories under Human Services, Public Safety and Transportation, and Parks will be split up amongst the different lead commissioners, and they will handle those as we move that, but the government operations is going to fall to me this morning, and then again, we'll make some changes as we look at this later on. So the first item, these are all under consent items, and the first item is C-0011353, Independent Contract Agreement for Lobbying and Professional Services with Miller Wenhold Capital Strategies LLC, and the amount not to exceed $80,000 for the period from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. I'm going to just open it up to any questions or comments anybody wants to make before, but we're going to move down all, through all of them, and then have one motion at the end. Any comments towards this? Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, this is a long-term contract we've held with Paul Miller out in Washington, D.C., a very successful lobbyist for our federal needs, and I wholly advocate that we move forward with this contract.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Item number two is Resolution 2025-GO01, Accepting Donations from Patrons for the Anoka County Library. There is an attached resolution there of some of the people that have given so generously to our library program, including some money that we received from July through December on the book cart, which was a total of $3,184.85. I also want to point out Catherine Sluzer in memory of Anna Labonte of $1,000 as well. So just some of the items that were on this. Any questions or comments on this? Moving down to item number three, Accepting Donations, Dedicated Donations for the Anoka County Veterans Services. I want to thank Richard and Julie Brassad for a nice donation, and we have a few others from the Wild River Bar and Grill, the Hideout Restaurant and Bar, and EJ's, Inc. We appreciate, much appreciated. This was given, these will be given to the Anoka County MedLink to defray costs for the volunteer transportation program, which is a great program of volunteers that help people all across the county get to and from their appointments, many of our veterans, but get them to and from those important appointments at the doctor and medical facilities. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move down to item number four. Item number four, Consider Recommending, this is from our finance area, Consider Recommending the County Board to Approve the Annual Designation of Depositories to U.S. Bank N.A., Wells Fargo Bank N.A., JP Morgan Chase N.A., and BMO Harris Bank N.A., and Delegate the Authority to Make Electronic Fund Transfers to the Finance Department and Chief Financial Officer and their designees. This is standard, this is in accordance with the Minnesota statutes and is standard every year. Do I have any comments? Seeing none. We'll move down to item five, also under Facilities Management, Consider Recommending the County Board to Approve Contract C-0011345 with Daring Pearson Group of Rogers for the Johnsville Library remodel in an amount not to exceed $210,700, which includes alternate one. Bid tab is here with us. The project does have a 10% contingency of 22,000 as well. Johnsville Library has not been updated for 20-plus years, for those of you in the Blaine area, the Ham Lake area that get down to the Johnsville Library. You've probably seen some of that. I remember having this conversation not too long ago, well, actually, it was probably a long time ago, it was before COVID, so we've been talking about what needed to be done, and now we're able to start working on that, so. Any comments on that? Commissioner Jepson, then Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, yes, this is a very long time in the working, over 20 years since it's been updated, plus there have been some delays in getting this final project of all the libraries in the district completed for a refresh and an update, so I thank all of staff and all facilities and all of the library staff for your patience, but I just did want to mention that the work is hoping to get started in March with completion before summer, so that we make sure to capture those early readers, young readers, for a huge program and successful program that the libraries has with the summer reading, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Meiser.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to make the same comment that I did in the meeting, which was congratulations to the folks that made this happen. Anoka County Libraries is now a fine, free county, and I believe all of the libraries in the metro area have also adopted this practice, but I know that it was, you know, tricky to approve and get everyone on board, but I think that is significant and a positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move down to then item six. The Information Technology Committee recommends the County Board to Approve a Vendor Award with Insight Public Sector. This is for network switch replacement project in the amount of $215,016.67. There's a 20% budget contingency for $43,000 for the total project, not to exceed $258,016.67. This network switch connects devices, our computers, our printers, our phones, wireless access points to our network, and they are run and used 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and enable devices to talk to each other more efficiently. Although they have been reliable and lived up to our expectations, they have reached end of life, end of support, and we, and are now outdated technology, so we need to make these switches. There are about 50 switches that need to be replaced in the county that are outdated, and we'll keep up with our network bandwidth requirements. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a little bit of a discussion in regards to the contingency. Maybe you can help fill in members of the public that are wondering about the 20% contingency, is that a normal thing, and what type of things we could run into to spur that contingency being used?
Yes, exactly. That's always been something that we have recently started to see in IT mainly, and it always kind of sets us off a little bit as though 20% is usually 10% higher than what we usually see. And that had a lot to do with during COVID, when we had some issues with inventories and how they were being filled by companies, and, but what we also, information that we received, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing it up, was that we are not seeing that we're spending this contingency. So it gets put back into our budgets as we move along, so that's been good. That's good. The issue was that we wanted to make sure that we didn't have delays in these projects for the most part, and that's what the contingency was trying, was going to help us out with, so. But it's good to see that we have not used as much of that 20% as that we, as we had set aside, and we're hoping that maybe along the future we'll see change in that, but maybe not. Inflationary issues are still there, and just making sure you have that inventory available and the shipment gets there on time. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, this is a topic I've been talking about for a couple of years now, the 20% contingencies. I think the level of use of these contingencies are right in the 3% to 5% range. I did make a request at the last meeting that we, you know, reexamine, you know, how we're doing this, because as far as budgeting and, you know, how money flows at the county, having a 20% contingency on contracts that are not small numbers does have an effect, and so, you know, hoping that they'll come back to us, and, you know, there are some projects that, you know, are unknowns, and then there's a lot of these contracts that are just kind of re-upping a five-year contract with some vendors. Those don't need that kind of contingency for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do appreciate the conversation that we had in regards to, I mean, it's hard to keep track of what's happening today and the consequences tomorrow when it comes to fiscal decisions, and I do just want to loop back to what Chair Gamache said, though, as well, in terms of making sure projects stay on time was really the driver for this, and then also, because if we, if we don't have the guidelines of these contingencies, I mean, we could do that, but then we have to bring it back for an amendment and really boggs down the processes, and in IT especially, I think that we need to offer more flexibility than less with all the changes that are happening in that sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll move down to item number seven, which is also from the Information Technology Committee, that the County Board approve Contract C-0011365 with SkyNorth Software of Fargo, North Dakota. These are for professional services for Microsoft 365 services, including the SharePoint Online Conversion in the amount of $275,000 for a term through December 31st, 2026. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to item number eight. This came from Property Records and Taxation, that was to approve the Joint Powers Agreement for Election Services to be provided for, provided by Anoka County for School District 16. That is the Spring Lake Park School District. That term is from February 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, as they have an odd year election, and this model of service delivery relieves school districts of the responsibility to dedicate and train professional staff to perform duties that happen every two years, and the revenue received by the county supplements the election's budget, allowing for retention, for retention of trained professional election staff from year to year. The general elections for all districts will take place on November 4th, 2025. The agreement is with ISD 16. Any questions? Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Consent agenda has been moved, items one through eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Any questions at this point or comments? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We'll move down to the Human Services Report, and I find to get a drink of water, and I will give it over to Commissioner Meiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, you did do a lot of talking. So yes, the Human Services Committee, we met on January 21st at 8:30 in the Government Center. I do also want to just make my own comments and just to, again, educate the public. I know we talked about this a little bit at our last board meeting, but just so everyone is aware, the shift in this quote-unquote committees of the whole, all seven of us now are present for all of the work that the county does. We all have the opportunity to learn together, to ask the questions, rather than the past format, which was three or four commissioners on each committee. So for the public, that means you no longer have to worry about what commissioners on what committee. We are all, again, learning and doing the work together. So this is something that I have been a proponent of for many years, as well as Commissioner Gamache, so I'm very excited to roll this out. And then I will also do the same format that Chair Gamache did as well. So in Human Services, all seven of us were present. These were all unanimous support, so this will be on a consent agenda. I will talk about each one, also allow anybody to offer any comments about that, and then we will all vote to ratify it together as a slate at the end. There were no public comments in person. I did not receive any either via email. I still always accept those. Anyone can email me about public comments at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. So first up on the consent agenda, number one is Resolution for Accepting Gifts of Human Services Programs from Bundles of Love. This is a nonprofit that has been a partner to us for many, many years, always nice to see. The second consent resolution is 2025-HS2, also accepting gifts for human services programs from Safe Haven Foster Shop and Foster One Ministries. And the third consent resolution, again, this would be 2025-HS3, also accepting gifts for human services programs from Care Portal, and there's some details there. This does happen every year, and we're really lucky and very grateful for any kind of contributions and help that we receive for our nonprofit partners. And then before I move on, since those were kind of lumped together, did anybody have any comments that you would like to make? Okay, excellent. Number four, this is for Contract C-0011190 with Missions, Inc. This is for the Withdrawal Management Center on 3409 East Madison Lake Boulevard in Plymouth, and this is in regards for detoxification and withdrawal management services in the amount but not to exceed $385,000 from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. And essentially, what this is, is a contract that allows emergency or beds for detoxification, four in total, and it's a partnership with law enforcement and hospitals, so much needed. Does anyone have any comments or anything they wanted to add about that? Item number five is Contract C-0011355. This is with Anoka County Community Action Program, also known as ACAP. This is on our Blaine campus here, and we are accepting $200,000 in funding to provide transportation coordination services and supports from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026. So this is a role that has been in place for quite some time. This is significant in terms of individual transportation for residents in the county, whether that be a medical appointment, to work, anything of that nature, so this $200,000 grant is going to be well-used. Does anyone have any comments about that? The last consent item would be December 2024, Medical Assistance and General Assistance Medical Expense Payments for Economic Assistance Clients in the amount of $328,712.86, and that is a typical monthly thing that you will continue to see on the consent agenda. Any questions about that? And then I guess I have a process question, Mr. Chair. Do I want to take the vote of the consent slate now and then talk about the informational things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will move the consent agenda with all of those items.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meiser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Heinrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Informational items, Commissioner Meiser.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do always like to share informational items with the public. The first one was a committee discussed Contract C-0011366 for Professional Services Agreement with ICS Consulting in Minneapolis. This was for the amount of $50,475 for construction management and master planning of the Anoka County Household Hazardous Waste Site Expansion Project. So that was a really great discussion in terms of what is going to be happening in the future around our site over in Blaine. And then the last informational item was discussing the Anoka County Canopus Business Ordinance moving forward for a public hearing on February 11th of 2025, and that also was a really healthy discussion. Counties are tasked with this new law that is in place, and it's going to be, it's going to be difficult, and there's going to be a lot of changes. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meiser. We'll move down to the Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So our public safety met on January 14th, and we did hear updates from the different departments that are, fall under public safety, so we heard from the sheriff's office, we heard from emergency communications, emergency management, and the county attorney's office. And just want to give a little bit of an update on our new emergency communication center, our new 911 center. Many people drive by and they're asking, what's going on? When is it going to be opened? There was a delay in some inventory parts, but we are very happy to say we are so close. It sounds like in the next couple months or so, we don't have a date exactly, but we're getting very close, and we look forward to hosting an open house so we can have, show off what we've done and the great work. It's a beautiful building, it's going to serve our entire county wonderfully for years to come. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you as we had no action items.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. That was good information on the 911. We're very excited and can't wait for the opening of that beautiful building. Moving down to Transportation Parks Report, we will start out on the consent item agenda with Commissioner Reiner on Parks, on item one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. My committee met on January 14th. All were present except for Commissioner Schulte. We just have one item for you to consider today, and that is recommending approval of Resolution Number 2025-TRO1, a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $2,481 received from Nick Roberts and the Roberts family to fund improvements to the Rydell Farmhouse located in the Riverfront Regional Park. I should mention, too, that it's been many years in a row that the Roberts family has donated dollars for, you know, upkeep and maintenance of the Rydell Farmhouse, and we do appreciate that. And with that, I will, I will make motion to adopt that resolution.
So we have this resolution as it offered. We'll just split these with the other way.
Oh, that's right. We're doing it all at once now.
That's fine. We'll go ahead and do this one. We've got an offer of the resolution. Any questions, comments about this? I know that we've been working with the Roberts family, I think, since, I want to say, 2019 or somewhere around there, yes, they first came to, or he first came to us. Appreciate the efforts that they've made in wanting to see, or wanting to be able to put work, put money into the, into the old farmhouse. It looks great for anybody that hasn't been there. It's right down on East River Road, just south of 694, the bridge there. Just a beautiful facility and available to be rented out. Commissioner.
Yeah, I should mention, too, the farmhouse, you know, was a part of, I believe, was a dairy operation for many years. It's right along the river. It's like 500 acres, and over the years, land was sold and developed, a lot of development down in that area right now. But the farmhouse can be used and rented for, you know, different events that you have or, you know, receptions. So, you know, something to look into. It's beautiful property.
Thank you. So we'll just do a roll call vote on this resolution.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Before we move down to the next resolution, which moves into Transportation, do you have any updates, Commissioner Reiner, on the Parks that you'd like to add from the informational items?
No, all routine and, no.
Okay. Moving down to Resolution Number Two, Commissioner Jepson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to clarify a minor typo on the resolution number. I will be asking for your consideration, approving a Resolution 2025-TRO2, a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into contract C-0011265, which is an IIJA Technical Assistance Grant Agreement with MINDOT for improvements at Trunk Highway 65 at the intersection of Bunker Lake Boulevard in the cities of Ham Lake and Blaine. As we all know, this is a very important intersection to go along with all of the trunk highway improvements along 65, and so this is for $25 million through the Raze Grant Program, which stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity.
Okay. Any questions on this? Otherwise, we'll move to item number two, or, excuse me, number three.
Consider recommending approval for Resolution 2025-TRO3, a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into contract C-0011370, an advanced construction agreement with MINDOT for pedestrian trail improvements along 44th Avenue Northeast from East River Road to Main Street Northeast, and the replacement of reinforced concrete deck on the BNSF Railway in the city of Fridley. This project has been talked about numerous times, but there is some significant difficulties with this because it's over the yard of BNSF, so it has some unique challenges. So many contracts still to come, and with that, I'm open for questions.
Good.
Okay.
Item four.
Consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0011349 in the amount of $152,515 with TreeStory Incorporated for hazard ash tree removal plus stump grinding costs. As we're all impacted by the Emerald Ash Bore Disease, getting rid of these trees has become incredibly expensive, and oftentimes, it's, it's an, it's an encumbrance for our own staff to do it, so we need to contract with others. And per the conversation with Transportation and Parks, this contract includes not only the tree removal, the stump grinding costs, but tot, the taking down of the tree, plus the grinding costs of the stump, plus the removal. So it'll be, so this TreeStory will be taking care of the trees once they are being taken down. And with that, I'm open for questions.
Yeah, not a question, just kind of a comment. As for those who have been at our parks, areas, and places along Chaminde Golf Course, other different places like that, you've probably seen the many dead trees this last summer. I think it kind of, at least all of a sudden showed up and seems to be exploding. But, so this is the first, one of the first attempts that we have to remove these hazardous ones. This is near trails a lot of times, to make sure that they're not falling and blocking trails or possibly injuring anybody that might be out there. So it's our, a good attempt. This TreeStory, Inc., gave us a pretty good deal from the numbers that we looked at on the other offers. I think a lot of those businesses are very busy, so when they, when something comes up like this, they may have a higher bid because of the fact that they're very busy already. But for the most part, I think people will start to notice some of these coming down in the woods will look a little different in certain areas, but we'll continue our work to replace where necessary, and, but we want to make sure we get rid of the hazardous ones. Item number five, Commissioner.
Consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0011352 with MSA Professional Services, Inc., for design and environmental documentation services for the reconstruction of 40th Avenue between Main Street and Trunk Highways 47 in the city of Columbia Heights. Open up for any questions? All right. Item six, consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0011351 with SRF Consulting Group for the Design and Environmental Documentation Services for the Reconstruction of Mississippi Street between East River Road and Trunk Highway 47 in the city of Fridley. Any questions? Okay. Item number seven, consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0011304, Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Anoka for the Temporary Placement of Flock Safety Camera Equipment Within Anoka County Right-of-Way to Assist City Police Officers in the city of Anoka, another city of the 21 coming along and wanting to partner with us on installing these flock safety cameras on Anoka County-owned equipment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, can you explain what the flock safety cameras do? As my understanding, it's not a ticket that would be like on a stoplight camera or something like that. It's a different mechanism, as I understand it, to maybe look back after the fact of something and have some real-time footage of, might be, an incident that happened. I'd be willing to be corrected, but that's what I think, Madam Chair.
Yes, absolutely, and I'll let Deputy.
Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Jacobson come and answer that specifically.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Just to speak to that question a little bit, they are not red light cameras, they're not speed cameras. Essentially, what they are is license plate cameras. And there are common questions about how does privacy mix in with these cameras, and the state legislature had passed years ago, when this technology first became available, a robust set of protections for people who have concerns about the privacy of these cameras. And the system that Anoka City is talking about in this resolution is the same system that Anoka County Sheriff's Office is partnering with, and those laws do protect people who are concerned about the privacy while also balancing the public safety needed these cameras. And I can't speak to any specifics, but I will say, we have seen significant cases, not only locally but across the country, being solved by these cameras. They have the technology not only to read a plate, but to understand a make, model, color of a vehicle. And we, when we have an unfolding critical incident and these partnerships are built with these cameras across the metro, it really is a powerful tool to help us locate a specific vehicle, a specific plate. Think about things like Amber Alerts, where we push a license plate out to the community as a whole. These cameras can tell us where this vehicle is, where it's been, where it was last seen. And in fact, a case of a, an assault that occurred in one of our jurisdictions up in Columbus, once we got a plate of the suspect vehicle, we were able to locate it in a nearby community within minutes. We knew where that vehicle was. So certainly, we understand the privacy concerns. We, 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 as well of our law enforcement partners, follow that law to a T regarding how long we retain the data, what we do with the data, because we understand it. But again, powerful tool in that partnership has been exceptional for us.
And just to follow up on that, you don't access that information until you have something to look for, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. We, the access to those systems is restricted based on the statute, so we can't just go in there and, gee, I wonder what so-and-so is doing this day and run a plate or run, run a vehicle description. We have to have a specific law enforcement need, and the penalties frankly are pretty significant for folks that abuse the system or violate the trust of, of our community. So, yes, we do have to have legitimate reasons to look at it, and again, it's very restricted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reiner?
And some of my questions were answered there, but what is the lifespan of the data as far as how long do you keep it? And you said that only certain people have access to it. And so if there is no incident to within the lifespan of that data, then it just gets disposed of, and how?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we, I'd have to check the statute. I believe it's 30 days. There's a specific number of days which I can follow up with you on, but that retention schedule is set by the law, and if we don't have any cause to access data within that timeframe, it's, basically, it's purged from the system. So we would have no way to go back, which is by design. You know, if we have a case that's unfolding in an emergency, obviously, we want the data there, but the privacy side of it says we don't, they don't want us being able to access data from a year ago or two years ago. We use that through our vendor, which is Axon Fusis. They are the same vendor that makes our tasers and our body cameras. They restrict the data, it's purged, we have no way to access it.
And just a quick follow-up, and so the data is housed at the county hard drives or at the companies that we're contracting with their hard drives?
Yes, sir. It's actually housed with our, with our vendor, with Axon houses that data, and they actually have to have a partnership agreement with the state of Minnesota and the BCA, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, because those two databases are linked, so, but the searchable data, we access through a connection with our, with our vendor, so we don't keep that data locally. Unless, of course, there's a specific case or an incident that triggers us to pull the data or save the data for a specific case, then of course, we keep it, but generally, it's with the vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Meisner, thank you, Commissioner Brassad.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I really appreciate the, the question and the discussion, so thank you for bringing that up. And I just wanted to add, at least for Fridley and Columbia Heights, some of the examples that you mentioned in terms of real results from using these flock cameras are also considerable for Fridley and Columbia Heights, so I, I think it's a great tool. I fully support that as a Commissioner and appreciate your, your explanation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brassad.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Deputy Jacobson, just to, so just to clarify, like this situation, this contract we have with the city of Anoka, so the city of Anoka really owns that flock camera and all the data that's collected from that, right? And then they're the ones that control access of that particular data, but our part of this is that it's on a light fixture or a post or, or something. Is that so far, am I correct?
Chair, Commissioner, that, that's accurate. So this specific resolution, based on how I read it, is we're authorizing the city to have access to the county's property to mount the physical hardware, but they, just like we manage our own agreement with Axon, they would manage their own agreement with flock, that kind of thing. So they, they're just asking, asking for permission to connect with, with the hardware. So we, we in the future would, you know, once this system gets built, we would like to connect probably with those cameras, but you have to have mutual agreements with the city and county to connect the backend, so.
So just to follow up, so, so far to date, the county has some of its own flock cameras, and we've entered into agreement. I see our, Joe McPherson is here, too. So, and, so we've, we've got some agreements with other cities for their own flock cameras. But for those that are concerned about the privacy issues, right now, you can't, from the Sheriff's Office, you can't go into Columbia Heights, their data on their flock cameras and see what they've collected. Is that accurate?
That's correct, unless we have a pre-negotiated agreement between the two organizations, and those, of course, are scrutinized by the elected officials, and in each responsible authority, each city, each county, has to make their own decision, you know, regarding those cameras. And there is a process to request data if we don't already have an agreement in place, which we may do if there's a need, but it's not an automatic net. It has to be built via elected official support.
And, and we have heard from some of our legislators that they'll probably be discussing this in more, in more detail, so don't know where this is, is going to end up, but I see Joe has come up. From the county's perspective, we're just trying to protect ourselves while helping out other local law enforcement agencies.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Chief Officer of Transportation and County Engineer. To your point there, a couple of questions back. Does the, does the county have any access to the data that comes out of the cameras that are installed out there? Chief Deputy is correct, we don't have any access to that. The Memorandum of Understanding that's before you today to be acted upon, simply all we're allowing them to do is to house the camera either on one of our signal poles, a mastarm for a light pole, or within the right-of-way, but all access to the data, we have no control over that. That's strictly between that local agency and their vendor. Looking at it in the, you know, in the long-term here, I think this is the fifth contract we have or the fifth MOU that we have, so it's catching on, which I think the Chief Deputy went through very well. We have no access to that data. We're strictly, this MOU states that they can put it in our right-of-way, they can attach it to our signal pole or mastarms, but they're responsible for all maintenance operations of those cameras. If there's damage to our signal pole, in the unforeseen circumstance where one of our signal poles or light poles gets hit and it gets knocked over, we're not responsible to pay for that camera or the reinstallation of that. So we're just helping out by allowing them to be there, but we have no access to the data.
Commissioner Heinrich. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are these cameras static or do they have, do you have the ability to move them as needed, I suppose, remotely, or is that a physical operation?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, to that point, to my knowledge, they're static, so they point them in the direction of the, the back end of the car, but I can turn it over to the Chief Deputy if there's more information you'd like to hear on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Generally, they're just static cameras that are pointed in whichever direction makes sense for how they're mounted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Jepson.
All right, great conversation. Next, consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0011121, a joint powers agreement with the city of Oak Grove for the reconstruction of Viking Boulevard between Rum River and Orchid Street Northwest in the city of Oak Grove. Any questions? All right, and the final transportation item is consider recommending approval to enter into contract C-0010346A, Amendment Number One, in the amount of $35,606.50 with WSB for Construction Inspection Services for the Intersection Improvements at 125th Avenue Northeast and Sunset Avenue in the cities of Blaine and Lionel Lakes. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will end my items for, on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll move items two through nine on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Schulte, it has been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brassad, I believe. Any other questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Commissioner Jepson, do you have any informational items to share?
There were a number of projects that were in, were, excuse me, were on our agenda for conversation. for conversation and information. Nothing at this point that I need to specifically point out. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move down to what is going to be seven E, which is going to be the management committee from earlier this morning. And we have three resolutions, A, B, and C before us, and they're under consent. Commissioner Reiner?
Yes, and I'd request that one C be pulled and voted on separately.
One C will be a separate vote. Otherwise, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, I believe we will take all of these separately because Commissioner Reiner was not present during the, the first portion of the meeting.
Okay.
So I, right, so I want to allow that. So the management committee, committee met this morning at 8:15. As you guys know, I am not generally a fan of moving things directly to the board, but this is all based on timely, timely, timely things that we have to, you know, get this going. So for the first one for consent, A, this would be for resolution 2025-M1. This is to approve the tentative agreements between the county of Anoka and Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc. This would be representing the office investigators and the medical examiner's office for January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. There is an attachment with some details. I, I will make note that this is a three-year contract, which I am personally in support of for consistency and better sustainability. Do we have any questions or discussions about this item?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
It's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Seeing no questions or informational items, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassid?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item B?
B would be resolution 2025-M2. This would be approving the tentative agreement between the county of Anoka and Law Enforcement Labor Services, representing the work release unit for the calendar years of 2025 through 2027. There are some details there. I will just share what comments I made in the actual committee meeting, which is, I, I know that this particular group was very tricky to negotiate with. And I'm very happy to see that we have come to an agreement. And going forward, I think that's, that's great.
Do I have an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
It's been offered by Commissioner Brassid. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassid?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item C?
Yes, item C is the updated Anoka County non-union salary schedule effective March 1st, 2025. There was a very detailed presentation. As the public knows, we have just gone through a all-department wage adjustment. And so at this point, I think I can speak for all of us, this entire board really cares about making sure that we do not fall behind again. And so what does that look like? This has been a proposal of both a methodology of looking at things annually with a structure around that, and then approving that structure is what we're going to be doing today. Any kind of financial details will come later when we have better numbers that our staff can actually dive into and investigate further. So again, I will just repeat that. Today, we are voting on the structure that will allow competitive wage. And any kind of financial decisions will come later that this board can decide yea or nay.
Commissioner Reiner?
Yeah, I won't be supporting this today, although it's presented as just supporting a structure. In the presentation was recommendation for wage increases. And what I'm looking at is just not what the recommendation is for wage increase, but the entire package. The package wasn't available for today's meeting to consider. And so I'm looking at this as a little bit more than just a structure since there is percent increases in wages being recommended with this action. So I will not be supporting it.
Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep. And I do appreciate your, your perspective around that and just being, you know, skeptical, because obviously we have to take responsibility of any financial consequences around that. But again, the, even the approval, it's approving the, the range. And so in terms of asking for specific numbers, at this point in time, it is nonexistent. It, it's impossible to do. So I just wanted to make a note of that.
Commissioner Reiner?
Yeah, actually, it's not impossible to do. It could have been part of the presentation today if staff wanted it to be.
Other, Commissioner Schulte?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we've, we've battled a wage structure issue in Anoka County since the early 80s. We put together a structure back in the 80s called the Hays System. And we battled it for many, many years. It may have worked when it was first put in place, but I'm told it really didn't even work good back then. It certainly didn't work in the last two decades. And it was an incredibly expensive fix. But this, this furthers that structure. This puts a structure in place. This does not currently, at this meeting, increase any wages. Will it? Yeah. Yeah, over time, this will increase wages, because that's what happens over time. Inflation increases wages. But this, this puts a structure to it, which is vitally important. And this will save this board and future boards from wrestling with future structures. Structure is important. I'm going to support this because I believe in structure.
Commissioner Brassid?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This whole Helios project has been quite the undertaking. And I believe HR today really explained it good, that we're like on step 11 of 12 steps in this whole process, which we started in 2021. So it, personally, I, when we entered into this, I didn't think it would take this long. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're getting near the end. But I think in the write-up, I think this sentence is so important, and it really relates to what this action specifically is. And it says, "This does not equate to across-the-board wage increases, but does increase earning potential over time with higher salary range maximums." So we're just looking at the, the ranges that are, that are out there. HR was very informative to talk about so much of our population are really long-tenured employees. You know, we've got 25, 30, 35, 40-year folks that have committed their entire, you know, working careers to Anoka County. And what this does, it makes and expands the range so that they know they have potential earning power as they stay with us.
Any other, Commissioner Reiner?
Yeah, again, I've supported the restructuring of how that we examine wage increases in the county. My problem today is not with the structure that's being voted on today. But, you know, part of the presentation that we had today was, includes the language of, based on the results using market trends and benchmarking data, the recommendations include moving to, moving the salary structure a total of 6% to account for market changes occurring during 2024 and 2025 to maintain compensation competitiveness. Now, what I was asking for today and didn't receive was what's the entire package? Because a lot of times, you know, when you're dealing with unions and such, there's, you know, 25 different things that are being considered as far as incremental little increases on a, a host of topics. And so I've been involved with union recommendations of maybe 3%. But then when you take into consideration all of the other items and you add it up, sometimes it ends up being 7, 8%. And so before I, you know, because there's a 6% recommendation in this action today, I want to see the whole picture before I can agree to that recommendation. And so I'm not against the process. I'm not against Helios and what we've been doing as a county for the last couple of years to correct, I guess, poor management in this area in, in prior years. But if I'm going to be looking at a 6% recommendation, I want to see the whole thing because I want to know what that number is.
Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, and I, we all get our, our vote, and I appreciate your commentary around this. I definitely disagree with your interpretation of it. And we're just in disagreement about the interpretation of this.
Commissioner Brassid?
And just to clarify, I, we have Steph here. This is only for non-union positions. This has nothing to do with any one of our unions. They negotiate separately. County Board is not involved. But what we're looking at with these range expansions, they're for non-union positions?
Hey, Steph?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. You are correct. This is the non-union salary schedule. A salary schedule is a reflection of what is happening in the market. So what we are doing is following recommendations from Helios and Analysis, because we have not made any adjustments to the salary schedule, in two years that it should move 6% forward. That's a reflection of what's happening in, in market. It does not equate to what the county will do and how we will assess our roles, make any changes, stay status quo or not. Salary schedule just reflects to market what is happening.
Thank you, Steph. Commissioner Reiner?
Yeah. And so, you know, my problem isn't with union or non-union. That's kind of a non-topic, really. It's 6%. It's an incremental process here where we're going to be approving one thing and then at a future meeting, another thing and another thing and another thing. I just want to look at the whole thing all at once. And you guys can disagree with that if you want and vote for this. You know, have at it.
So I'm checking with the clerk. Have we had a motion?
No.
I don't think so. Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I believe this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassid?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
No, no.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
And that passes sixth one. Moving down to item eight, which is, we don't have anything else from-
Yeah, I was gonna say, and that concludes my, my additional report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving down to item eight, committee appointments. A is to consider reappointing the following community agency representatives to the Anoka County Children and Family Council. We have Rory Moran at YMCA of the North for a term ending June 30th, 2025, 2027, excuse me. Item two, the second person is Connie Moore from Alexandra House for a term ending May 31st, 2027. And item number three, Lieutenant Kerry Wood from the Anoka County Sheriff's Office for a term ending May 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Item B, consider reappointing Reed Mortensen and appointing Ronnie Bruner to the Minnesota Extension Committee for three-year terms ending January 2028. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion, questions? I know Reed has been on the Extension Committee for a number of years now and does a great, great job. So I'm glad to see he wants to be reappointed again. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. And I believe this is the end of our meeting agenda here. So we have the public comment period coming up, but we're going to adjourn the county board meeting today.